Didn't get a meter, but yeah.
I will now call this meeting to order. A first order of business is to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. Commissioners, is there a motion to adopt the final agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the final agenda.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion does carry. Our next order of business is to adopt the minutes from the October 18, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion does carry. We are now on our first discussion item, which is item 3.1, which is minor subdivision at 8101 Cochia Lane, Holy Family Catholic High School property for a future fire station. And this is a public hearing. I will now turn it over to Jenny Faulkner, Planning Consultant with Bolton and May for a staff presentation. Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I will just start with the location map before you, and we followed the format that you're used to, so I've got several slides to go through here before your discussion and the public hearing is open. The site is located on County Road 18 and Cochia Lane, as you've noted. This is part of a church. Let's see here. The applicant is the City of Victoria in cooperation with the Holy Family Catholic High School and Church. We are buying some property from them for a future fire station. The total site is 68 acres that will be left for Holy Family and six acres for the city parcel for the fire station. Here's what it looks like carved out from their campus, so it's the southwest corner. The land use in your zoning map, it's R1, zoned R1 permitted. Permitted uses include schools and municipal facilities, which would include the fire station, so it is consistent with your zoning ordinance. The lot standards, because of the size, meets all your minimum requirements, of course, being six acres, 68 acres. There's no issues there. Regarding access, the city access points, we think they haven't completely been determined yet, but somewhere around Linden, where it meets across from Cochina Lane, we think there'll be a future. Maybe I'll use the pointer right in here. Can you see that? Let me get to the other screen. Okay. The mouse does not like me. Okay, anyways, across from Linden Lane, off of Cochia Lane is where we think that there will probably be a future access. And then there will be another access on County Road 18, has not been determined yet exactly where that will be. That's for the future fire station. And then the access points for the Holy Family parcel will stay the same. There's no changes there. Regarding your comprehensive plan, just of note here, statute requires that the Planning Commission or the Planning Agency finds consistency with your comprehensive plan whenever property is purchased or disposed of. So as part of the motion, we just want to make sure that you note that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, should you find it that way, and I hope you do, because your comprehensive plan shows this area is guided as public institutional. So again, a fire station, schools, libraries fit that designation, so a comp plan amendment is not needed, and it is consistent, not only in the use, but certainly to support the sale and meet the statute. No re-guidance is necessary. Just want to point out an easement on the property. There's a rather large existing gas line easement at the southwest corner of the site. Staff is aware of this. They're planning for this as part of the future development of the fire station. They can either work around it if there's perhaps parking or green space, or it could potentially be moved. The gas line could be moved. There's plenty of right-of-way around that, if that's just an option. So minor subdivisions are allowed with a public hearing and your review, and because we're carving off a parcel from a previously platted lot, the process is a lot simpler and the documentation is a lot less. And so after your review, this will go to the city council for review and hopefully their approval. And so your role tonight is to conduct the public hearing, ask any questions that you may have. Fire chief is here as well, if you have questions for him, and then to provide a recommendation to the city council. And our recommendation to you is that you find that this does meet your subdivision requirements, it is consistent with your comprehensive plan, and that you recommend approval of this to the city council. And we have a sample motion up here for you. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Very good. Thank you very much, Jenny. And I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the chambers this evening who wishes to comment on this variance request? If so, please speak at the podium and state your name and address, please. Okay. Hearing no additional public input at this time, commissioners may have a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Superb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion does carry. I will now open the floor for the Planning Commission to discuss. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I have a question. I guess you said that you didn't know where it was going to come off of 18. I'm assuming that fire trucks will go off 18 and return around Cochia.
Yeah, yes.
All right. Good evening. Commissioners, Andrew Hager, Fire Chief of the City. Great question. So we've been in talks with the county, because County Road 18 is under their jurisdiction about access to that site. So we can make a road connection with County Road 18. There's a 600-foot spacing requirement from existing intersections, so the Woodland Hills neighborhood to the east and then Cochia Lane, the existing Cochia Lane, we'd have to split the difference kind of there, but that's kind of how this parcel is actually carved out on the east, is to allow that future roadway to come in. What we know from those conversations with the county right now is if that's deemed an emergency vehicle access point only, so just fire trucks leaving to access the road, we likely don't impact the traffic volumes on that specific segment of road, and turn lanes don't become a requirement. If we pursue full use or full access point on County 18, then turn lanes become a portion of it and would have to be added to the project. So that's definitely a piece that will be weighed as design on the future facility goes forward.
Yeah, because I was just thinking, I mean, that makes more sense, because to try to bring fire trucks out off Cochia, and if you've got more residential traffic, and you know, the residents on Linden Lane and up Cochia probably aren't going to want high-speed fire trucks going or...
Correct. Yep. Again, our very early vision on this is that County Road 18 access point becomes probably fire trucks only exiting, and then the return point would be back on Cochia into that future roadway connection that was alluded to with Linden Lane.
Can you give us a count of how many fire calls you have in a given year, month?
As of today, we're 311. So about one a day right now.
Okay.
We know that with the growth of the city, that's going to continue to grow as well. 2021, we saw a 34% increase over the prior year. So again, it's really hard to gauge what those numbers look like, but it's definitely going to continue increasing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Chief Hager, what are the prospects for the county allowing the striping of County Road 18, sort of like one of those diagonal or X-boxes that can then have, you know, flashing signals when a call is coming out, so that trucks are alerted to traffic to...
Yeah, that's a great question. That was actually brought up when we met with the county originally to discuss this, and they said, you know, there's definitely opportunities for looking at a system like that to be installed.
Okay, and that might cut down the need for having to do lane work and things like that?
Yes. And we actually own a system like that today that's out on Highway 5 that could be easily transferred over to a new site.
Right.
Yeah, my only question about this would be school. At 7:15 in the morning, I live basically in this neighborhood. I don't leave the house. So fires, accidents, and issues, you know, don't necessarily adhere to any sort of clock. You may actually be closer to some incidents, just based on all the children driving their cars. What is being done to alleviate the times when schools going in and schools being let out?
That's a great question. You know, one of the things that we are predicting is going to happen when Cochia Lane gets extended to the north, that's going to significantly change traffic volume at that intersection. That will serve as a straight thoroughfare to Highway 5. You know, and as the fire department staffing model continues to evolve and we get more in the realm of having people in the facility, it's going to reduce that need for our folks having to travel in. So, you know, in today's model, if a call comes in, 20 people might be coming to the fire station in their personal vehicles. The model that we're building towards puts people in the building on predetermined shifts already and eliminates that need for, you know, large groups of people to come in, so it'll reduce that traffic as well, so.
Is there any sort of plan for 18 and Cochia to become controlled in some way that would make it easier for you to get in and out during any emergency?
That I can't speak to. Again, that would go back to county decisions, but again, we feel that having that access point, that dedicated access point to the east of that intersection on the county 18 will serve valuable for us, because I've seen it, I experienced that that intersection gets really challenging in the mornings and the afternoons.
So question, so the exit, so the access point off of 18 would be an exit, and that would be eastbound. Those, your trucks would be going eastbound, because that's an exit. I mean, you can't really make a U-turn, right, on 18 and start going westbound. You would do that through Cochia and go south and then go west on 18, correct?
So the access point on 18 would serve as a full access point for traffic coming out of the site. So fire trucks would approach county 18, and they would have the ability to go either east or west.
Okay, so it's both?
So, yep. Yeah, with no median or anything in the roadway today, that opportunity exists.
So it's like a true curb cut. Okay.
Yep.
Do you envision the access to be similar in size to the current access that the fire station has?
The roadway that would, and it's kind of hard to tell based on this survey, but we've had some very preliminary design work done with an architect to ensure that we could fit a building on the site, first of all. There will be a large apparatus apron out in front of the actual building. The building, again, kind of hard to see, but the building will actually sit where, like parcel A is located on that survey. So it'll actually be kind of a long driveway that comes off of that building, and, I mean, narrows down to basically a standard roadway width, and then makes that connection, so.
Will it be similar to the one that's in Chaskoff Engler?
No.
As an example, or not?
I mean, building-wise or connection?
Well, building-wise or entrance-wise, I mean, if you had to picture something like that, I mean...
The entrance, that connection to county 18, I would envision as like a city-street connection essentially, similar to what we would see with a three- or four-way intersection with two city streets. It would look similar to that, so. So the building will actually be set back a ways from the roadway.
This site is six acres, and your current site is how large?
I believe we're about an acre.
Okay.
So...
So just the opportunity for growth and...
Yes, yep. This is six acres in size. We know that with that easement that's in play and some right-of-way stuff, there's three to four acres of actual buildable property on here.
What will be left at your current site by this, having this new location? What will it look like and how will it be used, and what's the long-term plan?
Yeah, great question. So our current intent is that gets completely abandoned for fire protection services. The building itself will stay and get repurposed for some sort of city use, potentially like public works, being that it's connected to the water treatment plant. It helps alleviate some space challenges that exist with the current public works site or building. So the building itself will remain in possession of the city and will get repurposed for another use, but it will not be fire service-related.
I have another question. So currently, this land is used, I believe, by like soccer teams and lacrosse teams. So does Holy Family have another area that they intend to allow these practices to occur?
So a couple of quick things on that. They, so our plan would, construction doesn't take place till 2025. We do have a clause in the purchase agreement that allows a lease back of the site, so Holy Family can continue using the site as is until time of construction. I know, I can't speak to all of their plans, but I believe they have some future plans to modify the existing practice field that would be east of this site to, you know, help with some of those other concerns.
When I look at growth of other suburban areas, certainly Cochia and County Road 18 will be at capacity in a very, very short period of time, and that's primarily the access. At the same time, there's, that's probably one of those situations, there's no good answers for this, but that is a bit of a dilemma as to traffic, as Christian had stated, for you and your equipment and fast-moving and big equipment at the same time, too. So I'm sure that it's, you know, where else do you put it? I mean, we do need it, you know, we've defined that we do need it. This is, I don't know what a better location would be, but it is, it is a bit, it is a bit of a question as to the overall flow of traffic and how much occurs on 18 and then Cochia. And certainly Cochia itself will be a, will become a main thoroughfare.
Yeah, and I think that's a great point, and as we work through design of the facility, I think that's going to be, you know, a pretty important factor to consider where these connections end up and, you know, what opportunities we have, like to signage or anything like that to minimize those.
You said that there was about 300 calls a year currently.
Correct.
So even if we have, God forbid, double the number of calls, it's still two dispatches a day, give or take, right?
Yep.
So it's, hopefully, Commissioner Patterson pointed out, it doesn't happen at 7:15 in the morning.
Yep. And again, with the changing staffing model, you know, as we schedule people and put them in the building, it reduces that travel for those folks coming in to, you know, have to, that's a really important part of our model right now, is the time it takes to get our firefighters from their home to the fire station, so they can get on the fire truck and then turn around and drive back to the incident. And through the changes in staffing models, we'll be able to eliminate, you know, some of that travel, so.
So tongue-in-cheek, is it fair to say that you're going to buy Jeff a bicycle?
No.
He can run.
No.
He can run.
Yeah, yeah.
But that aside, though, the, and this may be out of your depth, but the section of Cochia at that point, is that roadway strong enough to have the weight of the equipment that will need to be placed on it for the return of the equipment back to the fire station? Or, you know, could there be a potential that there's some hidden cost that that road is not strong enough?
So again, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I can't speak to it, but as far as I know, all the city streets are built to our minimum standard that we have, and that minimum standard is built to support fire apparatus.
Was there only one location considered, or were there multiple locations considered for this?
That's a great question. So when we started this process in January of this year, I think we identified nine, eight or nine sites initially, and then just working through our broker that worked on behalf of us making connection with landowners, they, some of those quickly eroded, just because they were acquired for residential development purposes or other types of developments. Some had access point issues. Some just ended being way too far out of our price range, so this one was kind of that ideal one that had good access and connectivity. The price was right. The site itself was pretty attractive, as there's not a lot of terrain or topography to deal with as well, so. So, yeah, we started out with like eight or nine.
Do you try to, like, look at the growth of the city and get something like that's a little bit more central to access all the points? I think about the, you know, the speed of call time.
Yep.
And how do you, you know, and the growth of the fact that everybody's, that the Lake Township, Lake Town Township and everything would be then to the south, I wonder, you know, as we grow, do we need something on that end as well?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we did look at trying to, knowing where the city boundary is going, we said, where can we get right in the middle? And unfortunately, it didn't work. There was one property that kind of met the criteria, and we weren't able to get our hands on that. So knowing what we know with this site is, again, it's all growth-driven, so it's going to be hard to say, I mean, put an exact timeline on it, but we'll definitely need to build a second fire station as the city continues to grow. So, I mean, if I had to guess today, that's 15 years out, but we'll definitely need it at some point.
Or less.
Yeah.
Or less. Yeah, I think the, you know, in my evaluation of it, it's a, it's a site that works, but it's not the ideal site. But we have a very, very well-defined need for this, and that's kind of the dilemma, in my view, you know, in terms of the location of it. So any other?
I'd just like to throw a comment on here. It's nothing for you to answer, but last year, we went through an extremely painstakingly difficult tree preservation ordinance review, and I wish there was an overlay of Google Maps for this area, but it's basically all wooded, as far as I can tell. So I'd like it to be on the record for the city to be held accountable, as any developer would be for the removal of those trees and either planting them someplace or preserving some aspect of it. Again, not your problem, but...
And that's a great, could you, we go back to the area real quick?
Will that one work?
That will work. So the actual wooded portion of that, a lot of that, I mean, we know we'd have to connect a roadway through there, so that's going to impact some of that. How we currently have the site laid out, the building itself would actually sit where the practice field is today. So we really wanted to minimize the impacts to that, just because there is a ton of really old growth oaks in that section. So again, we know that through a roadway connection, we're going to impact that in some ability, but we really want to try to preserve those trees as much as we can, because they're not the trees you find around a lot anymore, and it provides some screening for the facility itself from the neighborhood to the west of that, so. But great comment. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the item before you will have to meet the ordinance requirements that you have set before. So it's a permitted use in the zoning district, so this won't come before you for site plan review or anything, but certainly there'll be more discussions at the council level as they deal with the budgeting and approving contracts and interactions with your fire chief on that side of things. So the item before you tonight is the subdivision ordinance. Does it meet your requirements, six acres versus 68 acres? There's no variances being requested, and is it consistent with the comp plan? So.
Very good. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So are we in general agreement on this?
Yeah.
I think so.
Does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the land acquisition consistent with the comp plan and recommend approval of the application for a minor subdivision of the property located at 8101 Cochia Lane as presented and discussed.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion does carry. Thank you. Our second item on our agenda is item 3.2, and it's a sketch plat and concept plan review Kelsner Property Residential Subdivision by Summergate. The sketch plant review is the initial stage of review that the Planning Commission reviews and considers regarding development proposals. This serves as a starting point for discussion and review regarding development proposals. There are no formal actions or recommendations taken by the Planning Commission at the time of the sketch plant review. The sketch plant review process is intended for the applicant to receive initial feedback from the Planning Commission and city council in advance of any necessary preliminary plant or rezoning application. This agenda item will begin with a staff presentation regarding the proposed sketch plant, followed by testimony from the applicant. The commission, the Planning Commission will then open the podium for public comment to the commission. Comment to the commission. At that time, please state your name and address. Please limit the length of comment, of public comment, to three minutes to allow for opportunity for all those wishing to speak to do so. Please note that the commission does not engage in back-and-forth discussion during public comment. After receiving public comment, the Planning Commission will then discuss the sketch plat and concept plan. I will now turn it over to Jenny Faulkner, Planning Consultant with Bolton and May for a staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, on the slide before you is your process, as you have talked, as you have talked us through. This is at the very first stage of an application that comes before you. So there's a lot to be worked through on this, and as you said, this is an opportunity to kind of lay out your issues on the table, and if the developer can work with that, they will proceed. So the site location, it is off of the northeast area of County Road 11 and Marsh Lake Road. It is approximately 12.2 acres. It's currently zoned ag, but the developer would be requesting to rezone it to R1 as the underlying zoning. And you can see some street connections there. They are proposing a residential subdivision, single-family with 22 lots that would provide connections to those existing subdivisions. As we were talking at the neighborhood meeting prior to this, there's five access points to this parcel, which is quite a lot, and makes some much-needed connections. So the existing conditions, as far as we know, this has historically been used for agriculture. There are some wetlands on the property, and we are unsure at this point about if there's any heritage trees or significant trees on this site. We just, as I said, we're in the very, very first stage. Regarding your comprehensive plan, this area is guided for low-density residential, and that allows for densities of 2.25 to 6 units an acre, and what you saw on the sketch plan was 2.3 units an acre, so it certainly falls right within that on the lower side. Shoreland overlay, when we put this together, we weren't sure if it was in the shoreline or not, and we have confirmed that this is within the shoreline, and it's a little bit different situation, because there's a tributary river that runs through the property, connecting some bodies of water, and then there's a wetland that this tributary runs through. And that's what you see, kind of shaded with the blue dots, is the 1,000-foot buffer area. So this is in the shoreline, which is, which is, doesn't mean it's not developable, it's just that there's other requirements that are going to have to come into play here. So what that, what your ordinance calls for is impervious surface limit of 25%, open space requirement of 50%. And so we plan and the developer to work with the DNR and see what their issues would be or concerns, or does the developer meet that or not. We're not certain at this point, but we're just kind of getting into this sketch plat review and what the requirements would be, and certainly shoreline does apply it to this. As I said, the development is 22 lots. They are proposing 14 of the lots be 62 feet wide, eight of the lots 66 feet wide. They are proposing 25-foot front yard setbacks. They are proposing 25-foot front yard setbacks on all of the lots, 30-foot rear yard setbacks, which is similar to the developments to the east and to the north. They are requesting six-foot side yard setbacks and eight-foot side yard setbacks on some of the lots. And here's how that compares to your regulations from the ordinance. So at the bottom of this chart are what the ordinance requirements are, 12,000 square feet. They're asking for eight, a little over 8,000 square feet. Your lot width requirement is 80. They're asking for 62 and 66. Your side yard setbacks are 10, and then your front yard setbacks are 30. They're asking for 25. And impervious surface requirements, 35%, and they're asking for 50. And they would be seeking these deviations through a planned unit development. Regarding buffer yards, there's a proposed 40-foot landscape buffer along Marsh Lake Road to the south and a 15-foot landscape buffer on the corner lots along Red Fox Drive, and you'll see that right on the entry. Let me, I've got this guy figured out now. Right along here is your 15-foot landscape buffer. And then we didn't see any issues at this point. We haven't gotten the detail, but buffer plantings will be required on all double-frontage lots. Regarding transportation and access, as I said, they're making lots of connections to existing neighborhoods. So connecting here, Red Fox Drive, connecting, I believe this is, this is, is that Timber Terrace here? And then Fox Drive, or this is Catkin Way here. They're proposing a cul-de-sac here on this first concept. We took a look at this, and we think this should be a through street to connect to a future development to the west. That developing, that property to the west is not developed right now, and having a separate access or access cut off from this doesn't quite make sense. So we would suggest that this connection go through. I know the developer has since revised the plans, and I believe that they can make that work. Regarding trails and sidewalks, in red, we have the connections of, this is of red, of Red Fox Drive, and then the connection on Timber Terrace sidewalks. East and west will be required as well. Park dedication, we looked at your comprehensive plan. It does show a future park kind of in this area, but the larger part of the circle is to the south of Marsh Lake Road. So cash in lieu of park dedication is being requested by the developer, and we think that's probably the best option here. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to put a park or get some land on the property that they're developing, given your park search area and your, in your comprehensive plan. There are, let's see here. Regarding the utilities, the parcel is served with utilities and can provide some nice loop connections for you with those developments to the north and to the west, and we've provided that feedback to the developer. There are some stormwater features here that were noted, wetlands and buffers that will be dialed to the city, and the watershed district will have to review this as well when it goes through to the next stage. There was a neighborhood meeting prior to this meeting. There are two members of the public that came to the meeting. One was what the person who farms the land inquiring about what's happening. No issues, just wanted to know what's happening. And then Mr. Steen is here from Larkin Hoffman, representing the shooting club, gun club, hopefully I have that right, on the south side of Marsh Lake Road. He did submit a letter with some concerns, and of course, the developer, the developer has that as well. He's going, and I'll let him speak to what his comments are. With that, as you've noted, Mr. Chair, there's no formal action. This is just to provide feedback to the developer as he proceeds through the process. Our recommendations on this development at first blush that should be incorporated into the preliminary plat are to provide the minimum seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setbacks on all of the lots, provide the maximum area of impervious square footage if they're seeking a deviation to the area, also provide access to properties directly budding the west and extend the sidewalk on Catkin Way across Red Fox Drive, and then work with staff to adjust, to address the shoreland requirements and the DNR on that. So that's our recommendation. And then Mr. Steen has some comments as well.
Very good. Thank you very much, Jenny. I will now open the floor to, for public comment. Is there anyone in the chambers this evening who wishes to comment on the item? If so, please speak at the podium and state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Brian Tucker, and I'm a senior project manager for Summergate Development. We're based out of Lakeville. In my previous life, I was a city planner for a south metro community for the last two decades, so I know what the role you guys play, and I appreciate your service to the community, and I know that firsthand, so, so thank you. Summergate is a developer out of Lakeville. We primarily do land development and try to get lots ready for sale to builders. In some cases, we'll work with multiple small builders that are looking for just two or three lots, and then in other cases, we'll sell to the nationals who are just looking to increase their inventory and looking for good projects. So we, that's kind of our, our bread and butter. We do a little bit of building, but it's not something we do at this property, and we would be seeking to market this site as we are able to move, move forward through the entitlement process. So we do have an agreement in place with the property owners, and we appreciate the opportunity to discuss developing this site with you and get your feedback. Jenny, if you wouldn't mind putting up the site plan, I can reference it. Ms. Faulkner did a good job of covering all the details of the sketch, so I won't go into that, but did want to just comment on a couple of things. So this site is somewhat unique just in, in that it's a small property with a fairly large wetland and the five access points that were mentioned earlier. So really, there's kind of a, at least in my opinion, a disproportionate amount of roadway for this site. We kind of knew that going in, and that's why we were trying to, to get the lot count up to a point where it's financially viable to develop this property and, and build the amount of road that's required to kind of finish the city network there. We do have wetland review underway. We have concurrence from the agencies as far as the actual delineation and type, so that's in process. There would be some mitigation required because of the proposed alignment of Red Fox Drive. No way really to get around that, so we do anticipate needing to mitigate at least a little bit of that area. The reduced lot widths and setbacks that are proposed are needed to achieve the project viability and, and reach that minimum net density requirement that the city has for the site. Again, with the amount of area that's not developable here and the amount of roadway, it's really hard to even get to that 2.25 units per acre, which is kind of toward the low end of what the city is looking for here. We're really wanting ultimately to achieve as much compatibility as we can with the surrounding Lennar development. That's why we're looking at trying to get 50-foot building pads, which accommodate a typical two, two-story, three-car garage home like you have in the, in the neighboring area. So with that 50-foot pad and some of the smaller lot widths, that's, that's the reason for the six-foot side yard setback that we're seeking. I, I know from experience that seems small. On the other hand, I, I think we've all seen throughout the metro area that the lots have gotten smaller over the years for a number of reasons, not, not solely because of market, but certainly market has, has driven lot sizes smaller and, and just economic viability these days makes it, makes it a necessity as well. So, so what I've seen in other cities is the site setbacks, because the lots are getting smaller, kind of need to be commensurate with the smaller lots. So if we have smaller lots but still maintain the larger setbacks that were typically required, then it really doesn't accommodate some of the, the desired building product types. But that's certainly something we want feedback on because we realize that's a departure from what you normally have. I believe the Lennar project to the north and east has seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks in comparison. Lastly, we did have our consultant review the comment related to extending Catkin Way to the west. We should be able to achieve that, make a dead end, and make that feasible for future connection to the west and pretty much keep the same lot count. It does look like a couple of the lots that we had slated at, at 66 feet would drop to the, the smaller lot width that you see on the east side, just to fit those in there. With that, appreciate your time, Commissioners, and happy to answer questions or just take any feedback that you have so that we can make some determinations as to how we'd like to move forward with this, this site.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for this gentleman?
I have a quick question. So on your plan, you've got estimated wet fill, and it looks like it's running over Red Fox Drive onto, looks like house number four? I don't know else to reference that. Can you comment a little bit about, like, what that means for that, how, how you're treating that pad, that site? Because I, I'm just curious, if this road gets reconfigured and there is no roundabout, is there a water feature there? Like, what does that mean if you don't have to put wet fill on the other side of Red Fox Drive there?
Right. So part of the proposal would be to mitigate that wetland area, to remove it, to replace it with soils that are suitable for, for building. And then, as you're aware, any kind of mitigated wetland has to be mitigated through the wetland bank elsewhere. So I don't have the calculation on that area. Let's say it's 20,000 square feet or 10,000 square feet, something in there. We would typically have to mitigate that at a two-to-one rate elsewhere, but then that area would be reclaimed and soils brought in. It would make that pad suitable, and that would have to be tested, you know.
So essentially, you might add it to like the north part of Outlet B, that, that, that wetland there, or that pond there?
There's potential that it could be mitigated on site. There's also potential that it might be mitigated elsewhere in the, in a different wetland bank. It's kind of at the direction of the wetland agencies. We haven't had that, gotten to the point of that kind of discussion, but that would be forthcoming.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have something that brings the existing streets to the east of this that we can get a visual on?
Does this help?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I guess the question I have is, is it essential that there's a connection to Marsh Lake Road with this?
I would say, Commissioner, from talking to the engineer, it's very essential.
Okay.
That Red Fox connect to Marsh Lake. That's a key connection with this property when it develops.
And if I understand correctly, I think it's a collector's street, so from that standpoint, it's really designed to pull all that neighborhood traffic through to Marsh Lake.
Especially since the school is right there. I mean, yeah.
We're, we're still struggling with Timber Terrace and bringing that down, and the easements that are going to take that to bring that to County Road 18. That's sort of where my driving point of that question is. Thank you.
And I believe, Commissioner, it's in your comprehensive plan. I looked at it earlier today. I don't have it completely memorized, but to the comments from Larkin Hoffman and the future road alignments, it does show a key connection there with Red Fox Drive.
Well, yeah, so staff did recommend seven-and-a-half feet, and many of these, I think 14 of them are six. Like, in terms of the developer, what kind of thoughts do you have on how to, how to accommodate? That's a, you know, it's a pretty big gap, looking at the space that's available.
Right. Yeah, to the extent that we could modify the plan, tweak it here and there to, to get that extra one-and-a-half feet for each lot, you know, we'd certainly, we'd certainly do that. Again, this is a very constrained site, and, and as we've looked at it, we're just not really seeing that opportunity. And again, if we take Catkin Way straight through to the west, we're going to have even more of the smaller lots, so that's kind of working against us as well. But, so again, really, kind of at the end of the day, what we're just looking for wherever possible is to try to get that 50-foot pad. If, if the planning commission and city council determine that, you know, they're not comfortable with six feet, then we'll just have to adjust how we market the site. But just know that our goal ultimately is trying to be as compatible with the existing neighborhood as we can from a building product standpoint.
Well, it is, it is a rather complex piece of property. Is that true?
Correct.
And there's the, the low land itself will, will certainly have some difficulties dealing, dealing with that. The, you know, rather than a cul-de-sac, the straight through, so that will, will you still have the same numbers of homes projected on, on this property?
Yeah. Based on an initial sketch, if you take the road straight through, we'd be able to get three lots on the south side of that extended roadway and then four on the north side, so we would keep the same unit count.
Yep.
I would point out that some cities are real sticklers about temporary turnarounds where dead ends get too long. That would certainly not be to our advantage here if we had to lose a lot or two in a small development to provide that. So if, to the extent that there's flexibility to do a hammerhead or something else, that would be great. We can have those discussions later, but that would be one, one issue we, we need to discuss.
Well, I'm going to jump in and provide some feedback. The, the six-foot side yard setback, it's not going to be consistent with where Victoria wants to go for its house spacing on lots. We have been compromising coming back down in about seven-and-a-half feet has been, seems like the hard deck. We've been encouraging at least eight. The latest subdivisions that have gone on before, brought before us have been bumped up to nine. 10 is probably where we have the character that's consistent with the, with the rest of Victoria. And I think it's incumbent upon us to keep that feel and character in, in the community. So I, I just have another comment, the, which is going to be lot four on the western end of things. Yes. I, I would have serious reservations about bringing in fill to turn a wetland into something that somebody's largest investment that they'll probably make be sitting on. Is there a possibility that this could be configured so that that building pad then becomes out of that wetland and maybe bring that pond access through beneath that in, in replacement of it? So you're not sitting and then having a residence on former fill.
Yes. Actually, taking the road straight west helps to alleviate both that lot that I wouldn't want to have to maintain, and it also gives us the ability to steer clear of that area and just have that in a rear yard. And we do know that we'll have to provide adequate access to the pond, so that makes that more viable as well.
Great.
So I, yeah, I think it's a win-win there.
Thank you.
Other, other thoughts?
So this is the open forum. Do we get to talk more about this after the open forum's closed?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, make sure I'm not getting into talking out of turn.
No. No, I mean, you know, my, my initial view of this is that, again, it's a very complex piece of property. And that's probably, that's probably an understatement. This design and going to the, the six-foot side setback, that is, that is an issue. And, and it's kind of back to, but, you know, this is the starting point on this, and, and it's step number one of many steps at the same time. But it's, you know, my, my first, second, and third view, back to the drawing board with this, in terms, in terms of, of how do you position individual lots that will, that will work on the, on the property? So.
Should we close the public hearing?
Well, we have, there's a couple, a couple gentlemen here.
Sorry. I didn't know what was going on.
Good evening. Josh Metzer, 9540 Timber Terrace. You might recognize me actually as, full disclosure, being here in the past, speaking on behalf of Lennar with the Brookmore Project. So I, I certainly understand the, the need to maintain lot count to make a project work. Overall, a good plan. I actually live just what would be three lots north of this here, right? Correct. So we knew this was coming. It's not a big surprise, and we're all new residents here, so it's not like we've been used to a wide-open field for decades. Only issue that I see with the plan is the lot at the corner of Timber Terrace and Red Fox, kind of a awkward. Fox, kind of a awkward note on the other side there.
This one.
And then south to Red Fox.
True.
That one there. Yep. Red Fox being a collector, you're not going to want to have a driveway access onto that. There are no existing driveway accesses on Red Fox to this point. And you're, I don't know what the city requirements are for spacing from an intersection to a driveway, but you're getting pretty tight there to squeeze a driveway into a Timber Terrace, especially with two sidewalks converging there on that corner. I think it sounds like the direction the side yard setback is going. It might force those two lots to the north of it to widen, which would may require this lot to move elsewhere. That's really my, my only concern with the plan. Otherwise, plan looks fine to us. And it will honestly be nice to have an additional access out to Marsh Lake Road than having to come all the way through the community to get to our house. So that's it. But again, totally understand the need to maintain a lot count to make a project work.
Gentlemen from Larkin Hoffman?
Thank you Chair Iverson. Commissioners, Jake Steen with Larkin Hoffman on behalf of the hunt club. My address is 8300 Norman Center Drive in Bloomington. You've got my letter, so I'll keep my comments brief. We don't have an objection to this development. Do have two concerns though. And the first is the access. As staff indicated, this has been a long planned connection to Marsh Lake Road. We know that there's going to be a lot of traffic out onto Marsh Lake Road. We have an existing driveway about 60 feet to the east of this. So it's really critical for the club and the club members that if any new access onto Marsh Lake Road is consistent with this driveway orientation. There's existing infrastructure and this is our primary access to that portion of the club when, when they're out hunting on that eastern edge. So that's our primary concern. The second, you, you may have even heard from me in the past about other developments around the hunt club. And that is just a reminder to the city that state law does ultimately put the onus for sound mitigation onto the city. So I think it's important to consider that when, when you're going forward. It looks like there is some buring. Ultimately, we'll let the city decide how to treat that. And then we also just want to make sure that the city does condition any approval with a notice of the club's activities. It's been a shooting range for more than 50 years. It's an active shooting range. And we just want to make sure that people are aware that we exist and will continue to exist here. Thanks much.
Very good. Thank you. Well, we are here to be good neighbors, number one. And we're also here to make things happen too. So at the, at the same time. So.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments from the developer? Anything you want to, want to cover? Any, any questions from the commissioners?
I think we should close.
Very good. We will, we will close. And I'll now open the floor to the planning commission to discuss. Commissioners, questions or comments? I'm ready.
I don't agree with six-yard side yard setbacks for the reasons that we've gone over along with firefighting and everything else. You talk about putting in homes and it's your most expensive asset and you're basically going to have a marsh in between each house because there's not going to be any sun. So then you got to engineer how to put that all together and it never works. And basically nothing grows there anyway. So I would like to see eight feet. Concerns that the hunt club have, is there any way to move, is it Red Fox?
Yes.
Can it move west to be a better access point to not interfere with their driveway? That'd be something I'd consider. I'd want to see the sketch plat without the cul-de-sac and what else did I have? Oh, access and the pond, the pond access easement. Is that the right spot for it? I don't know. For the upper Outlet A pond area. If you're moving a street through, things become straighter. There might be a different and better way to have pond access in that spot. And one other thing, but I can't dig it out of my notes. These guys are going to have to go through, I believe, lower Minnesota River watershed district, Carver County watershed management. So a lot of our ordinances are going to fall into their jurisdiction as well as the paper tiger of the DNR. I think the pads are too small. Those are my comments.
Very good. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I also agree with Kristen. I don't also like the impervious, 35% impervious surface requirement when the zone requires 50. I mean, it's, I think you're trying to squeeze a lot into an area. I understand that's what you have to do to make it work with the road connections and whatever. But I, this isn't something I would A, want to live in or B, recommend. I mean, I, it, it needs a lot of going back to a drawing board to, to try to figure out. And I guess the other thing would be, you know, what's, what's the DNR and the watershed? I mean, their impervious surfaces are just as important as ours. So and I don't know that they would agree with it either. So that's all I have.
I don't want to say anything anyone else hasn't already said. The only thing that I will, because I agree with my peers here. The only thing I want to just ask is if the land to the west could be potentially available because there's more economies of scale and you could, I believe there's just one home there. I'm just curious if, if I can ask the developer a little bit about that, if that is an option, if that's been explored, because that kind of opens up the site and maybe allows access points to line up a little bit more easily. Although, question, the access point that Larkin Hoffman just mentioned, is that the 90-degree access point right there? Or it's there? Okay. So that really is not that far off. I, I think that's incredibly important for the long-term planning. I'd like to see that line up as well. There's a lot of land that's there and someday that's going to be very important for how this, that property wants to be 20, 30, 40 years from now.
Yeah. I think the lot size, the size is, yeah, again, I don't, I don't know that it would be the desirable thing that I'd be looking to buy into. But it was mentioned about the cost associated with the city with the gun club. I mean, do we have a sense of what that is going to be as a cost to the city were this to go forward? I mean, we're, we're way far off. But just hearing that was like, huh, what does that actually mean to the city?
If I may, and I'm speaking on your chair.
No, go ahead.
The, so the, the way that the statute works is that it actually just puts the onus on the city to require the developer mitigation. You have a lot of discretion as to how to determine what constitutes sufficient mitigation. Has to be sound attenuation. But if you fail to do that, and again, I'm, I'm not the city attorney, but if you fail to do that, ultimately the law would strip some of the protections away from those property owners in terms of bringing claims in the future. So it's really intended to protect existing shooting ranges. And it's just intended to ultimately encourage the developer, the city to require the developer. So in theory, again, you know, it's, you could certainly pony up if you wanted to, but it really shifts that burden to the developer.
And that's, the landscaping berm is kind of the proxy for reminder. Okay. Thank you. That's, that's something I wasn't familiar with.
Now, and there is, there is full disclosure that, that's issued to all prospective buyers at the same time. True.
Mr. Chair, what he's asking for is that that be a city requirement.
Uh huh.
Right. And we can all sit here and say, yeah, yeah, that's nice. But he's asking that it be a condition of the plat or the PUD to satisfy that, which is very doable. That's, that's a common thing.
Laura, any, any questions?
Laura Sturtevant. Julie. I think, I think most of it has been said. I think that you've heard of the comments that you, kind of what you need to look at. I think I would agree with what's been said here today and take a second look at what you need to do there.
Greg, additional?
I mean, I just, I think that the mitigation is, is pretty essential. We've talked about mitigation with, and disclosures about the gun club on previous subdivision. So, you know, but this is really literally right across the street from it. So and then it just, pardon comment, it, it feels like Red Fox could almost be brought through lot 10 and then moving its point of access to the west. And then you swap that lot over into this east bank. And then maybe you then get some of the space back to address the six-foot side yard setback. That just doesn't feel like it's a, is something that is desirable. And perhaps maybe reviewing some of where the trail placement is, can the trail fit on the south side of Red Fox and be, be connected that way to, to squeak some more space in there?
Greg, the challenge with that might be that the Red Fox will, will not connect to the street below. If you go, if you go to the west, you're not lining up with the connection point.
You want to line up with the hunt club, not go away from the hunt club.
I think, I think the concern is that do we want this to connect to the hunt club or do we want to keep the traffic away from its connection?
You want that. If it ever becomes a four-way stop, you need that.
Is that, from an engineering standpoint, is that where we'd want to be? Have, have it in alignment?
Mr. Chair, I'm not the city engineer nor would I ever claim to be an engineer. But.
But from an engineering standpoint.
Yeah. I, I would say that it's something that can be looked at. This is, this is the sketch time. So it certainly is a, an idea worth looking at. If the, if the shooting hunt club is okay that it's further to the west and wouldn't object to that, you know, that's, that's a key, something that would have to be taken into consideration and they would have to be involved in that. But it certainly is an option to look at to get the, the width between those homes to meet what you're asking for at eight feet.
Very good. We seem to be in general agreement that it is, it is in fact back to the drawing board with the concerns that, that we have. Is that, are we in agreement on that?
Yes.
Can we request, can you, can we request like a secondary sketch plat or not?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we believe you can, you can do that. You can, I would, let's see here, we can table it, which would be indefinite date, or we could continue it to like the next meeting or to meet, yeah, a month from now, your next meeting. And then we can work with the developer to bring back revised plans and some more information for you. We can do that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think from the developer's standpoint, from, from the views of all of us, is that it's, it's a difficult piece of land. I think we established that. And, and it's going to, back to the drawing board. But again, you know, I just want to state that, that we're here to make things happen at the same time. We're not here to stop things from happening. So, so whatever, whatever it takes to, to satisfy what, what those needs are, we'll be in favor of it.
I have two questions, if you don't mind me asking. And I'd like to ask the applicant one question. And that was the question I asked earlier. But I also, whenever we review this again, I would like Kara's viewpoint on Red Fox Drive connecting with Marsh Lake Road, Marsh Lakes Road. I think their viewpoint is going to be very important about long-term planning. I think she will clearly say that these roads do need to line up. I think her influence on this is important. But my question is in regards to the property to the west. Is that something you've explored? Is there any opportunity there? It seems like you might be able to solve a lot of problems if that is an opportunity for you.
Yes. Commissioners, our land guys are always talking to folks. So I'm going to assume that they have, but I can't state that without some question. Certainly, the more space you have, it, it helps resolve some issues that we've raised just with it being a, a tight site. So my understanding from the lady that I got to meet earlier at the neighborhood meeting was that the folks that had moved in there were fairly new. But we can, we can certainly explore that as well and just kind of see where they're at from a, a long-term standpoint.
Thank you.
Do you know that there's three homes there? Or that way, I can say it, two of those three for sure are fairly large or fairly expensive homes.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the context.
Scott.
I'm sorry?
One of them stints there.
Oh, you're kidding?
Anything else? If not, we will, we'll close this item.
So do we want, I guess, do we want to table this? Do we want to table it for a future date or leave it up to the developer to come back or how?
Mr. Chair, I think it might be best if there is a motion with your direction, even though this is not a recommendation that you're recommending. But if you are consensus that there is, that this should be brought back before you, before going to the council, then there should be a motion as such.
That, that would be the conclusion.
Yes.
Yeah. We don't, we don't want to close it out because there's some very well-defined potential. Exactly how that occurs. So.
So Mr. Chair, we're looking for a motion to bring this item back to the planning commission before it gets forwarded, the sketch plat, before it gets forwarded to the council.
I'll make a motion that this gets, the sketch plat gets represented to the planning commission at a future date determined by staff and the developer before it goes on to the city council.
I'll second that.
Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most and carries? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Thank you. We'll be in contact within 30 days or thereabouts.
Tomorrow.
Well, it sounds like it's not totally back to the drawing board and they've already discussed some of these things anyway. So.
Yep.
Can't be unexpected feedback.
We call it tweaking.
Yeah. Back to the drawing board, you know, it's like whoosh.
Yeah, that sounds a little more.
Very good. Thank you.
It's like this lot tweaked that lot.
Yep. So miscellaneous items. We have, we are, we are losing a very, very valuable planning commission member in January. And I would like to have Greg say a few words.
I'd like to say, well, first I want to thank the citizens of Victoria for their, the election results for choosing me and Andy Reeve as our future council members to be sworn in in January. I want to say that having been on this planning commission for just over two years, it's been a wonderful experience. Every one of you has been a dynamic team member. I'm grateful to have worked with you. And I'm actually in the catbird seat because I get to work with you in the future and examine your good work. We, John, you say it over and over again, you know, this does the heavy lifting for the council. I'm probably going to be watching you guys even more. I know what you're capable of. So thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity. Thank you to the citizens of Victoria for for the great opportunity to lead our city in the next four years.
Very good. Well, and thank you so much at the same time. It's been, it's been a real joy for all of us to work with you. You bring a, all of us bring a unique perspective to the, to the group. And I think that's the key. That's the key to the whole thing. We see, we see various different things, various different ways. And I think that's the, that's good news. And we look forward to continuing to work very closely with you in the, in the future at the same time. The city councils gain, planning commissions loss, but the city's ultimate gain.
Thank you.
So very good.
You've been a great team. I can't say just how much satisfaction I've had working with each and every one of you over the past years. It's just, I'm not, I mean, it's rare when you see teams that can just coalesce, gel, and move quickly like we all have done. And it's been a great experience. So thank every one of you again.
Excellent.
He says you're going to carry our torch.
Yes.
He said you're going to carry our torch.
The, another, another item, miscellaneous item is the city council report.
I had last night's city council. There was nothing really too exciting except they talked about the legislative agenda for the upcoming year and their priorities. So it was the main thing on the agenda for last night. So nothing too. It was basically a carryover from 2022. Same stuff. Their goals are the same as what it's been. So, you know, hopefully, with some of the surplus money, we can get some money in the city. But we'll see where all that goes. But they have a goal and they have an agenda to go for. So work with the legislatures.
Excellent.
That was about it last night.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Staff, any, any additional items? Jen?
No, staff.
Very good. Commissioners, any other, any other items that you'd like to cover?
Jen, one thing I would request is if the city council meetings in December are canceled, would you make sure and let the corresponding planning commissioner know? So it's not news if they show up here for the meeting and it's not going on.
Absolutely. We're just finalizing on if we're going to cancel that.
Thank you. No one to speak of them, I might be saying me.
It's a helpful request. Thank you.
If there's no other items, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Secondary second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.